Meeting to order, the first, are there any changes to the agenda, Dean?
No, these are all internal matters and they'll be addressed in the order in which they appear.
All right, the first item on the agenda is approval of the regular minutes at the July 15th meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes?
All second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, the motion is carried. Number two on the agenda is application Z-07-23 filed by the Salina City Commission requesting amendment of Article 10, signs by amending sections 42-503, 504, 506, 507, and sections 42-516 through 42-524 relating to the installation of billboards and digital electronic display signs, continued discussion of LED signs from the June 17th meeting. Dean?
Before we get into any of the official items, I wanted to introduce to the Commission, Dan Stack, who is our new city engineer, and either he or someone representing him will be in attendance at our meetings, we don't have any engineering items today, but I might just let Dan introduce himself and tell you a little bit about his work and personal background, and then we'll let him get back to engineering stuff.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, I've been here about a week, and I'm originally from here, but I've lived in Kansas City for the last about 11 years, and had some good experiences with cities up there, so I'm excited to be back here to hopefully help with the city of Salina, and look forward to working with you all in the future, thank you very much.
Very excited you're here.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thanks, Dan. John, can you find the slide that has the table on electronic signs? I think the primary thing, we just wanted to more or less, because we've been at this for some time, and the resolution at the last discussion seemed to be that we wanted to take the time and temperature signs and make them a category in and of themselves, and the electronic message, the changeable copy type signs, treat those separately. We do kind of do that today, but not in a real well-defined fashion, but the, I think the two points would be this grouping here, and this grouping here, basically what this is saying is that in any, and I guess I'll use the example of Cloud and Highland where we have the small insurance office there, they are zoned C1, and today they have and could have a time and temperature sign there that's electronic in nature, they could not have a changeable copy electronic sign other than something that has time and temperature on it, and that would apply in our C2 zones also, so...
An example of which?
Example of a C2 zone property, the property that has Papa John's, a chiropractic clinic, I think a UPS store, it's there on South Ohio, it's a neighborhood scale, commercial development, that is zone C2, the way that things would be structured today, that would be, if there was a bank there, or some other business that wanted time and temperature only, that would be allowed, and the changeable copy electronic message sign would not, and then the other question comes in over here, I think we had that discussion, but is there any interest in, if we have a church, or a school, or something that's, traditionally those are zoned residential, but they're on an arterial street like Ohio or Crawford, is there any interest in allowing that on some basis in a residential zone district, or is that just a bright line? So in other words, if one of the high schools, and I know the one district that's missing here, which we can't leave Mr. Schneider out, is the university district, but I think you've got to think of those in the same way, although the university district is much different, it's a much more specialized district, but I think that is, is everybody comfortable that in a downtown setting, I think the question is whether this should be a no for C4, and then is there any circumstances under which these nos could or should be yeses, and is everybody on board with making a distinction here between your standard time and temperature and electronic message?
Just to clarify, Dean, I want to make sure, and I think this will probably help answer labs, when we say electronic message board, and then signs that are flashing pulsating lights, now when we think about pulsating lights, I think about the Stiefel Theater, exactly, electronic sign, you know, provided it wasn't doing the pulsating that we all talk about like with Womack and with everything else, I think that would be okay, definitely in the church and schools, and universities, but I don't know that we're really making a distinction, I think we're saying electronic message boards, they could pulsate and flash, in a sense, if they're programmed that way, or are we lumping any electronic board that's pulsating, those words, more into that third category?
Well, the hardest one we have is this, which based, and this is based on what are not well-written current ordinance is, is that, okay, I can have this downtown, but I can't have this, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Well, to me, that means that the type of sign that you have at Womack Sunshine Ford, which does have, not only changes the message, the image electronically, but it has animation, it has some flashing characteristics to it, that's going to be hard, if this is yes for downtown, but this part's no, then we really have to understand the sign pretty well.
So again, one sign could be electronic message board, but also could be a pulsating, again, it's all we discussed earlier, it's programming, if it was simply putting up static messages, that's one thing, but if they program it so it's flashing, that changes their allowable use.
The choice is, do you have this category, and this is a second category that encompasses everything, or do you have one, and then two, which is very limited programming, and more like, even maybe less than what the BIC Center has, and then this is a third category, which is the truly more like the Sunshine Womack Ford.
I guess my thinking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, when I first read through this, I pretty much divided the top two categories into electronic LED message centers, whether that be time, temperature, or ones that are able to put displays and stuff up there, and the bottom two categories I thought of as more older mechanical type stuff with lamps that flashed, and, you know, arrows that flashed, and those type of things, did I not get the distinction correctly?
That's the way it is currently, because our current ordinance doesn't even recognize really that this technology exists, that's the struggle with that, but this here really is more about chaser lights, and things like that, with the way this is set up doesn't really anticipate that technology.
But I think I'm understanding, Aaron, you're talking about, you can make the electronic message board be flashing and pulsating.
Yeah, so you can make it not.
Yeah, I think if we're talking more about the static type, like we see in Wichita or Kansas City where it's a message, and then it changes and it's another message, but not an animated message, it's simply holding a static message for length of time, it fades into another message, I think that's, I can think of that more as electronic message board, I think more of the Womack and the other as the, almost like its own separate category, I know, I understand the problem, it's going to be enforced, like somebody puts up an electronic billboard and they say it's going to be static, and then you drive by one day and it's, hurry, 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 sail in Sunday, you know, and we go by and say, hey, wait a second, we approved you for a static electronic billboard, we didn't approve you for a, you know, fast change, animated, you know, simply, these would be message images that change, is one type, and then the sort of, you know...
But you could foresee that, say, a church that's on South Ohio or something, that wanted to have a bulletin board type sign, but it was electronic versus just the change of the letters, you could see being open to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I do too, we have sold, I mean, churches and schools and hospitals are some of our strongest candidates right now, we have sold them to those entities, and they are, we get calls for them weekly, you know, wanting to know how much they cost, and that type of thing, and I don't see that going away.
Does it matter if the church or school is on a street like Lewis or Neal, or something like that, that's residential and not on Ohio?
I think for our purposes here it does, and I think, and not so much in terms of, do we allow it, or do we not allow it, but I think at some point we have to, you know, be controlling of the size, and also the output, and we get...
Size, bright.
And we keep coming back to this thing, you know, what's too bright, I think until we get some quantitative way of measuring that, in other words, with a device, you called it, I can't remember the name of it, Dean, you had mentioned it...
Yeah, it measures nits.
Yeah, until we come up with that device and a way to write that into a language, I think that, and in my opinion, I think that this is the way it should be, I think that a size, or a sign that was going to be in a residential district that happened to be at a church or a school, should be done by two things, size, and then also the brightness, and then, and also at time of day, brightness in the day, time of brightness at night, and the, as far as the other signs go, I think, you know, we're going to, we're going to talk about that, but I think that that's such an important component of what a church does, a church services a lot of people, a school services a lot of people, and a hospital services a lot of people, and I think that those are entities that need to reach out to their constituents and get messages out to them, and this is certainly a very good way of doing that.
Just think, last time God spoke to everybody, he flooded and everything else, now he just used his electronic billboard.
Low impact.
Low impact, that's right, see the advantage of electronic billboards already, we don't have to go through another plague.
So I think we discussed before that in Kansas Wesleyan, and K-State Salina, places like that, may have a need for conveying that kind of events and those kind of things as well, and that's what those signs are particularly good at, so, I mean, we're looking at it obviously from an ordinance standpoint, but I think the other, the other goal is to get something like, and maybe we need a few more categories there, but the goal would, to also be end up with an end product like this, that's almost a, not only is it a handout, but the people who are permit technicians, or the people who review sign permits and all, something like this is a lot easier to use when you're saying, all right, I'll check what this property's zoned, and I'll check this, you can have this type of sign, but you can't have this, this is antiquated language here, we have to do better than that, but this is just a summary to say, if somebody came in today and they were a church or a school, and they wanted to have an electronic message board sign, the answer would be no, and that's kind of the question, is there circumstances where that could or should be yes? We actually had an ordinance for a while that said if you were a church or a school in a residential zone, you couldn't even have an internally illuminated sign, you could have a sign, and you could put a spotlight on it, and externally illuminate it at night, but you couldn't have an internally illuminated sign, well, you look at the light spill from the spotlight, and from some of the other sources, parking lot lighting and things like that, well, the internally illuminated sign probably produced less light than either of those, so that was changed, but I think if you're talking about a residential neighborhood that has a small neighborhood church, or neighborhood school, and it's usually dark in that area, and you bring in, the other thought is, is that we had one provision, the ordinance has said the illumination had to be turned off at 10:00 PM, now that's, that becomes an enforcement thing, but that's also an option, to allow that type of signs, but don't allow it to be illuminated after 10:00 PM.
Did you make that into another category, like the electronic message board, I don't know, static, and then electronic message board?
Well, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking too, is, but not exactly that way, just leave them all electronic message board, but in certain categories, say C4 and up, put animation okay, or something like that, in other words, it seems to be that there's almost a consensus that there's, in the lower categories, that we don't want to see animation in, certainly a residential district, and possibly a C1 and a C2, and the practical nature of these signs is, is that they're coming down in price all the time, and even something that stayed up and was a static message for months and months and months, would be something that is going to be more and more cost-effective, and at some point will actually out, be cheaper than putting up an old-fashioned sign, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, and I guess, Dean, I like to see legislation that's enforceable and usable and doable by your department as well, would it be easier for you guys if we just made everything that was electronic message center categorized that, and then put in like, say, C1, C2, and possibly C3, no animation, text only?
I think the simplest thing to classify would be to have this, this is one category, I think everybody clearly understands what a time and temperature sign is, and what it's limited to, then everything else constitutes this, which I think we talked about, electronic message center is the broad category, and then within that, you could have things about changeability of image, and how the image changes, and those type of things, and do that by district, and...
Yeah, was that?
So these nos could turn into yeses, but with qualifications, and obviously these are antiquated, so the simplest thing would be to have a one big umbrella of electronic message center signs, and then try to address it district by district as to what should be allowed.
I think, I think really, I can follow what you're saying, I think that this is actually okay, but if there was just a small line, and you're starting at say C5, I don't think, I think you guys are kind of anti downtown C4, so maybe have it start at C5, that just said, kind of hitting on what you're saying, Dean, and that is, animations acceptable in the C5 and above districts, I still think there's, you know, the sign and flashing pulsating lights, I don't really see that as an antiquated phrase, I think that still fits, and the moving parts and rotating beacons, I think that's still okay, but I think we could simplify it by just sticking with this grouping that you have, and just adding C5 and above can have animations, and then just define what we mean by that, I mean, obviously, we don't expect the C3 and C4 to have a static message and be there 24 hours a day, we know that it will change, but we're talking about a fade change, one image at a time, no animation or words moving, and then C5 and above, they could bring out full on Cartoon Network or whatever they want to do, I mean, is that kind of what you're hitting at a little bit?
Yeah.
I think the pattern's fine, just maybe add that one extra section that you were discussing, and we'd have it covered.
And then we need to add university to this.
Yeah, university, church, and school, and just say it's okay in the residential area for that, based on size and brightness?
Yeah, I think, you know, most of those places are, the traffic speed, you know, would probably dictate the size of the display that they would have, but most of them, I can't imagine having more than, say, a 30 square foot or 40 square foot need for, you know, electronic messaging.
I mean, we're all in agreement that churches, schools, and universities are okay, I know one guy is.
Not everybody, that's all.
You know, I don't know what the definition when you say animation is, you know, to me, the pulsating, flashing, bright, attention-getting part is the part I don't like, I mean, animation itself I don't mind.
Right.
You know, if you have a football player at the school and saying game time 1:30 Saturday, you know, that doesn't bother me, if that's what you call animation, that doesn't bother me, it's the other stuff, the attention-grabbing modes that...
And I think that's where the enforcement would be very difficult, yeah, I think the enforcement would be very difficult of that.
Yeah, and again, that's where programming comes in, because I, because a lot of us drive by it every day, but the Sunshine Ford sign, I've seen some changing characteristics there, where it has gone into a, sometimes at night, sometimes at daytime, basically a flashing mode, where there's no image on the sign, but all around the outside of it, it's just, it's just, that's pulsating, and that becomes an enforcement thing, but that, from phone calls and things we get, those are the things that drivers and others find irritating.
What zone is that?
That is C5.
And what's an example of C3?
The Sonic on South Santa Fe is a C3, but most of South Knight Street is C3, Walmart, Target, Sam's Club, Central Mall, most of that area is C3, almost all of South Ohio, Dillon, South Gate, that area is C3, Sunflower Bank, those areas would be C3, a lot of Broadway and Crawford is C5, but the, that is the, that's kind of what...
Do any of us see a reason to have flashing pulsating lights in the city at all?
Well, I think, you know, I find those offensive as well, when they're like that, and frankly, what Concordia has done is when people complain, they go to the business owner and they say, we've had complaints about this, and they tone the thing down, you know, I don't know if we have any way to enforce that right now, but certainly some of them are offensive, I would think you would have a hard time, from a standpoint, if it ever got to court, coming up with a difference between the flashing and pulsating lights at the Stiefel versus the other one.
Except for, there's a specific provision in the city code that grandfather's in the Stiefel sign, just the way it is, so that's...
Okay, Main Event Salon, you know, frankly, I mean, I'm not trying to pick on anyone, that is a very hard-to-read sign, and I find that one distracting, even though it's old incandescent lamps, for example, so...
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but if we're opposed to moving parts, rotating beacons, and all of us are also, or the majority of us perhaps, are also opposed to pulsating lights and flashing lights?
I mean, it's possible to allow animation and say that the flashing is not, it's just how you structure it.
Right.
That's the way I'd like it, yeah.
Could there be some kind of language where we could have animation, in other words, and call that a scene, and the flashing light part of it, you know, specifically put some language in there that prohibits, like a bright to dark change in backgrounds that lasted for less than a second?
Right.
Would that be a way of describing it?
I was exactly thinking that, if, because if we have this meter that we're talking about, the static stuff, the brightness and darkness isn't going to change that much, a moving image isn't going to change, but that flashing will set that thing off, will say, okay, settle at what the image is, settle at what the image is in between, and if there's a gap of a certain amount...
There you go.
Then you say, not acceptable, you know, a brightness, what would be the language for that brightness change of, you know...
Differential of...
32 nits, or whatever you call those things, yeah.
I think Mr. Householder and I need to do some fieldwork with this machine.
Yeah, that's right, we want to go out and play with it.
Vegas and...
Yeah, how much is it, yeah, we need to go to Vegas.
Yep, yeah, there you go.
End time, percentages end time.
I think I saw when I signed up, there were some provisions for field trips in this.
I think you know the direction of moving.
Yeah.
Yes, I think maybe mentor.
Or flashing, or pulsating.
Yeah. That's really what we were needing, a way of guidance, and then what we didn't want to do was just flat, because we've seen them in Wichita, and certainly in other places where churches and schools are moving in that direction, and...
Now, what about the signs in Wichita that actually, like, flip?
Those are, the tri-sided, they're actually billboards, or they have actually ones that have rolling things on them now.
What do those, how do...
Is that the moving parts?
Yeah, those are pretty well-dedding when the cost of them is, they're still pretty...
There's a new one.
Are they coming back?
Yeah, I was going to say, I have to tell you...
Stilwell Rock Road, right above Starbucks.
They're lawn louvers, basically, and they change that way mechanically instead of by image.
I just read about some of those in one of my last month's sign magazines, they are starting to produce some more of these now as a direct replacement to digital signage, you know, it's, if you can't have a digital sign that does everything that way, then you can print an image on a roll, and you can roll this, the other thing that's going to come up, is they are starting to drive these down streets, lighted at night with moving messages, rolling...
Drive them down the streets?
Yep, they have either a trailer, or dismantled on a truck, and they go down the streets.
Let's write that in, they can't do that, well, the other thing it allows them to do is a number of different advertisers...
Exactly.
On one sign, so I don't know if we want to address that, how we address that.
How do we address sandwich boards? I'm kidding, I'm kidding, guys walking down the street with the two-sided boards.
That's really not an action item per se, we just wanted to get that clarified as to where we go with residential, and particularly schools and churches.
I just want to thank the staff for helping us work through this extremely volatile and voluminous subject, I mean, you've helped us divide this into, you know, small eatable parts, and stuff that we can come to consensus on, and I think you guys have done a very thorough job.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we wanted to switch gears while we're talking enforcement to enforcement, and I think, John, you've got the current provision, but under our current structure, I serve as the city's zoning administrator, and I'm authorized to employ deputies and assistants like Dustin, and John, and others to carry out these duties, but these are all activities that we are involved with, I think this section is actually pretty antiquated as well, but these are supposed to be some of the duties that we have, and that is issuing zoning certificates and occupancy certificates, the difference is that a zoning certificate is when somebody is coming in for a building permit for a building, and it's reviewed by us, and we review the location of the building, and the parking, and the landscaping, and the signage, and that to determine that it does comply with our local zoning, the occupancy is on the other end, and that's where we go out and do a final inspection and say, have they put their parking in, do they have it striped, if they're supposed to have a detention pond, did they build it, did they plant any landscaping, did they pave areas that were supposed to be green space, that type of thing, and that's supposed to be done, the one is on the front end, the one's on the back end, if you could go back to number two, John? We're supposed to conduct periodic inspections, which means getting out in the community and noticing things like the Sunshine Ford sign, or things of that nature, obviously, we are in charge of receiving applications, filing them, giving them forwarded to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Planning Commission, and other bodies, we are to maintain all the records on changes to zoning regulations, zoning map changes, any action that this body takes to approve a text amendment, or to approve a zoning map, maintain a current copy of the zoning regulations up to the minute, and the same with the zoning map, that if a property is rezoned, then we have to go in there and keep that maintained. Um, maintain a current copy of the zoning regulations up, up to the minute, and the same with the, uh, zoning map, that if a property is rezoned, then we have to go in there and keep that maintained. Um, and obviously provide clerical, technical, and consultative assistance as may be required to the various boards. Um, the main focus, we did want you just to have a copy of this section so you'd understand what, who did enforcement and what's, what's being enforced, but if you could go to the next page, John? This is the, uh, the part that's causing, um, some confusion, and that, that is the fact that we have a term occupancy certificate in the building code, and we have, we also have it in the zoning ordinance here. And, um, what we had discussed was that, that creates some confusion. It even creates some confusion for, uh, for builders or for building owners, where you could have, um, a building that is safe to occupy and get an occupancy certificate, but maybe the parking's not finished, or the parking's not paved yet, or there are things on the site that, that don't comply. And so, having two different kinds of occupancy certificates that relate to two different things, we think is confusing. So, our, our primary focus is to take that term occupancy certificate and replace it with a term certificate of zoning compliance, which just basically means at the end of a project, we go out and review the plans and make sure they've been filed, and make sure that parking and landscaping and setbacks and signs and things are as approved. And that, that would certainly be something, um, if you review a site plan for a restaurant, our jo- and you approve that plan, our job's to make sure it gets built in accordance with the plan that you saw and that you approved. And at the end of that process, um, issue, what we would hope would be a certificate of compliance, which means that they've complied with all the conditions. So that, that's the main focus there, I guess if you could keep going, John? And it's, it's referred to again, and again, we would, we would like, um, the other thing that is not, doesn't work too well is that you could have a, uh, change of use of land from a vacant lot to a car display lot. Well, you need to have zoning for that, but there may be no structure to occupy, you, you just have a, a change in, in use. So, um, it says, "No occupancy certificate for a new use." Well, that, if there's no building there and it's just a land use, that doesn't work very well. So, our proposal would be, um, to have the term, um, occupancy certificate changed to certificate of zoning compliance everywhere it appears there. And I, I'm going to keep going, John? Is there, is there additional in our handout?
No.
It doesn't go beyond the, uh, so I guess we just focused on the, the primary section there, um, but what we'd like to do is, is, uh, substitute that term wherever it appears, but we also wanted just you to have a copy of that, um, other, um, duties of the enforcement officer and other things, just to see if you had any, um, questions about what we do or what we're responsible for as a staff? Whether there's anything in there that surprised you or you think is, ought to be in there or overlooked? But our, our plan is not to, um, do a major overhaul, but mo- mostly focus on not using the term certificate of occupancy in the zoning ordinance, but-
I think if that makes sense to staff and to people who use the department, but as a layperson, a certificate of occupancy means something to me that the zoning certificate would have a whole different meaning. For instance, when the Art Center warehouse, uh, was waiting for the certificate of occupancy in order for the artist to be able to use the apartment, that had a real clear meaning to me. But if you called that, somebody said, "Well, we're waiting on the zoning certificate," I would have said, "Huh?" So, but, but like I said, that's, I'm a layperson and don't come in contact with that.
Well, the, the term is not, is not going to change, and I actually sign all the certificates of occupancy, but the, the certificate of occupancy is, is really a message that the building has been inspected and that it is safe and ready for occupancy.
Right.
Or in, in the case of a motel or something like that, that all the life safety things are in place and it's ready to occupy. And we do, in a lot of cases, what we call a temporary certificate of occupancy, which means that the, the building may be safe and ready to occupy, but maybe they don't have all their landscaping done yet. Well, that's not a life safety issue, so that's something that you can wait on. That's not going to change, but we get called on a lot of times, we, we have a lot of land uses that don't involve a building. Somebody goes out in a residential district and turns it into a contractor's storage yard. Well, if you say, "Well, you can't do that without a certificate of occupancy." Well, that's kind of confusing because you're talking about the use of land, or we do, um, certificates of zoning compliance for, uh, car lots, for bars, for all, all kinds of things on a weekly basis. And what we get asked to do is certify that the zoning is correct for that property or for that use that's proposed for that property, and we think that's more accurately describes what, what it is that we're, we're doing. And so, the, the scenario that you described with the Art Center warehouse and the apartment in there, that's not going to change. It will still be a certificate of occupancy, but there's, there's lots of other things where that, that term doesn't work. And we even had a court case that I was involved with that, the, uh, which we're talking against ourselves, but the builder had a certificate of occupancy, because the house that had been built was inspected and passed the inspection. But he also built a deck, which was not permitted, did not have a permit for it, and was built in a location where it encroached where it shouldn't have. And so, the, his defense in court was that he had a certificate of occupancy, but the court said, "But that, that just relates to the building, that doesn't mean that all the zoning is, is in, in place." And that's exactly what it says in the building code, is that when you get a certificate of occupancy, it's, it's saying that from a building code standpoint, the building is safe and ready to occupy, but it doesn't cover other codes like zoning. And so, we feel like to, to plug in that gap, um, and I, for lenders and for insurance companies and, and things like that, the, the term zoning certificate or zoning compliance does mean something. And so, we, we didn't want to have two, you know, if I have a certificate of occupancy in the zoning code and one in the building code, does that mean I have to have both? Or, or what does that mean? So, that's the primary thing we wanted to focus on, but then we also wanted just to include the whole section so you could see, this basically lays out the responsibilities of the planning staff in terms of, of reviewing building permits, doing inspections for occupancy, um, receiving, filing, keeping records on all applications, keeping the zoning map up to date, all those types of things. And I don't, I don't see that changing, I think we just need to change the, the terminology and get rid of occupancy certificate and, and choose a different term.
I would also suggest that in the first paragraph, you would change the gendered language there from his duties to his, hers, or-
His, her.
Their.
Their duties or his or her?
And it seems to me the Board of Zoning Appeals, following some of your other examples here, should be capitalized, since it's a-
Entity.
It's a recognized board of the city.
Right. My teaching skills.
Coming through.
Well, we are, I mean, we're going to go through line, line by line, anything that's a term that's antiquated or we wouldn't be used anymore, we will do that, but the, but the heart of this, the, the format of outlining the duties and those type of things, we don't, we don't plan to change. But we just wanted you to be familiar with that, that this, this is kind of our, our guidebook for our day-to-day existence of, of what we're supposed to be responsible for day-to-day, um, in addition to, to staff in these meetings or, or those type of items. So we, we will come back with a formal cleanup amendment on that particular item, and then we wanted to shift gears and just get some guidance on lot splits, help explain what they are, and, uh, what some other communities are doing that, that we don't do and don't necessarily want to get in the business of doing either. But, um, and our, our purpose section is not very well written, but, but the idea is that, I guess the basic rule is, is when you, you see somebody come in and they're coming in with a plat, and they've got platted lots, and they have one large platted lot, they can go out and sell off a portion of that one time. But they can't, they can't go out, they can't come to you and show you a plat that has a large lot on it and then go out there and, and divide it up five times and create five building lots without coming back to you with, with a, a replat of that. But there's a, there's a provision that, that says, well, if, if somebody wants to come in and they want, they've got a lot and they want to sell part of it off and create a new building lot, then there's a provision for us to come in and, uh, review that and give formal approval of it so that they can get a building permit. But what it doesn't mean is that every time some, somebody sells off a piece of property, that you have to come to us and have a, review it. We, we do that oftentimes because title companies or insurance companies or lenders want us to do that, and that gets back to the certificate of, of zoning compliance. And then the other side of that, of the split, is the adjustment. And, uh, John, if you can maybe put the graphic up that, that shows the lots. This is just an example that, that has the vacant platted lots, and let's say you, if you had an unusually large platted lot, and you were, you were going to split something. We have had a few of those. These on Huntington aren't real wide, but you could have maybe a, a wide set of lots here, and you would have, there might be two lots, and this person gets together and says, "Well, this is wider than what I need, so I'll sell this off," and this person says, or maybe it's a builder that controls all of them, and all of a sudden you end up with three lots there instead of two. That would be a, a lot split, that would be something that we would, um, formally review and grant an approval to administratively. It's designed to be where people can go in here and do divisions of lots without having to come back to you for a replat and just have us approve it administratively. The other thing that some communities have gotten into a formal review and approval of is, "I've, I've got a lot here, this is my neighbor's lot, and this is the platted lot line, and my neighbor wants to buy ten feet of my lot." Um, if that was done here, hopefully people will call us on the phone and say, "If I want to do this, um, how do I go about doing it and what, what issues might come up and be involved in that?" Well, if I, if I sell off ten feet of my lot here, and that moves the property line to the very side of my house, well, I, I don't have a yard anymore, I've got some zoning violations, I might have some other kind of violations by having a structure that's right on a, a property line. So the, the purpose of us consulting with people and doing that review is, um, just to advise them, to head them off from creating a situation where if they have a fire or some other damage, that they're then unable to get, um, built back. And so, we do a lot of that by more or less information or courtesy. What we put in your packet and what Manhattan has and, um, some other communities in Kansas is they have a lot split provision, but then what we have in here is an example that, from Manhattan, of a, a boundary line adjustment. And so, they actually have a, a process, and in Manhattan, it was dr- it was actually asked for by the bankers and the title companies and the, and the mortgage places who, um, were trying to head off the problems of people selling our property that then created problems. Because lenders, if they've got a mortgage on a house, and that house burns down and it can't be built back because some non-conformity's been created, they don't like that, because it makes them feel like their investment is not, is not well protected. So most lenders don't want to make loans on something that can't be built back. We've run into that, and even on this commission where we've had people who've had houses that they bought that were in areas that were zoned industrial. Well, if that house were ever removed or it burned down, you wouldn't be able to build a new house back because industrial zones don't allow housing. And so, they would then come into the Planning Commission and try to get the zoning changed to residential, you know, because otherwise they couldn't get financing for the home. So, our proposal here is, is to change or clean up the, the language in the purpose section on lot splits to make it clear that it's, it's only, we're only revealing lot splits, um, that are being done in anticipation of somebody applying for a building permit, and that we're not revealing or required to review all the others. We had a case, um, that we reviewed recently, there was, uh, there's a piece of property, it's at the, by the Central Mall, it is a property that has a bank on it and also has a convenience store on it, and it's one platted lot. And it was owned by one entity, the convenience store was leasing a spot there. And so, they came to us and said, "We're thinking of, of dividing this lot in two and having separate ownership," and the lenders and attorneys involved wanted us to review it and make sure that both lots would comply with all the, the zoning requirements, which gets back again to the certificate of, of zoning compliance. They weren't, they don't have an ordinance and said they had to do that, they were doing that because they thought that was the prudent thing to do, and so we reviewed it and we said, "No, if you do it, if you put the line here, everything will be in compliance with zoning." But that, that's something that we do because people, uh, choose to want to do that. And what they have in Manhattan is it says that if you want to sell ten feet off to your neighbor, you've got to apply to the planning department and go through this, this formal process. And so, we, we at least wanted to educate you about what the difference is between a split, which is you're creating a new parcel, and an adjustment, which is basically you're moving the lot line between two lots. Our inclination would be that unless, um, bankers or insurers or whatever are- bankers or insurers or whatever are asking for that, we really don't want to get into that business. I mean, we're happy to advise people who come in and ask about selling off a piece of their lot or offering advice, but we don't really want to get into the boundary adjustment business. But we at least wanted to bring that up, that you can get in trouble long-term by, if you sell off a piece of your property and it ends up creating something that's either a violation or something non-conforming on your property.
Well, on top of that, too, if you were to sell, if one of them were to sell the property and it wasn't very clear where the property line was, there could be issues there, too.
Yeah, we usually advise, when we talk to people and they're wanting to buy a portion of their neighbor's lot, we advise them to use a surveyor and have new pins set. And then there's no question about what was actually purchased.
And then that's turned into the title company and they have that information.
And they create a deed and they record it. But otherwise, we don't have a process for that. So this comes up very rarely, but the, it was indicated to us, and I would agree, that if you read that language that we have in the purpose section, it would almost imply that any time somebody's trying to split off a lot, we have to approve that. But the only time we're doing that is if somebody's actually filing a permit application and it's, the split is part of a building permit. So we wanted to go back and we will clarify that, but we just wanted to see if the commission understood the lot split and if you saw any reason for us to formalize what people have to do to adjust a lot line. But if not, then we will stick to what we're doing and just make it clear. But I wanted to make it clear that if somebody has a large lot and they're trying to divide it in two, they don't have to come to us and get some formal approval of that. We're always happy to give them advice and bring up what the pitfalls might be if they do it incorrectly. But this commission once had a case in front of it where somebody did a division front to back and they had a townhome and basically they sold all the parking and access to one party and then the other owner didn't have any place to park or even a legal way to get to their front door. And that unfortunately came to this group and we had to figure out a way to undo that. But that usually doesn't happen. Usually when you do a townhome, you divide it in half with both facing the street, but this was done with a landlocked back half and an accessed front half. So we will just proceed with focusing on the purpose language on that, but we did want to take the opportunity to discuss that and to distinguish between what's a split and what is an adjustment. And like the final item we had there, just wanted to share with you that there is going to be a new fee schedule for planning applications. And those will be implemented, we thought, January 1st, but it's actually got an implementation date of November 1st. And so we're going to be working with Sue to get that information out in our Development Services newsletter. But we also wanted you to know, just because we discussed our thoughts about possible fee adjustments. And so there will be a change in sign permits, how they're assessed, and some of our other standard fees were increased compared to what they were before.
Is there a cross-the-board percentage kind of increase?
Well, no, there was on some of the fees. There was somewhere in the neighborhood of 3% to 5% to 6% adjustments. But these were actually done and looked at by the planning commission and where we tried to go in and look at how was the cost related to our actual direct costs for publications and mailing and how complicated they were from a time standpoint, that type of thing. And so we tried to be a little more scientific in our adjustments. And so this, what you have here is the fee schedule that the city commission adopted. And so for a rezoning or for conditional use permits, some of our more common applications, those will be adjusted accordingly. But I don't, there wasn't anything here that I don't think is, varies greatly from what we discussed with the commission before. And so we will, as I said, we will use the Development Services newsletter and other means just to let people know what those changes are. There hadn't been anything really comprehensively done since 1994.
Did you have something for, is that, take care of that. Did you have something for other matters?
For other matters, just wanted to let you know that we will meet on the second, which is the day after Labor Day. But we have a couple of replat items on there. And we'll have a site plan review for a proposed new restaurant. And it's out in a planned commercial area out by the courtyard by Marriott, out in that same area where you've seen Taco Bueno and Popeye's Chicken. But that is scheduled for your review on the second as well. And then the only other thing I had is I believe, am I correct, that this is your last meeting for your two terms? Or did the clerk's office notify you of that?
No. This is, no. This is news to me.
Yeah.
So I've been, I'm ousted, right?
It's the French Revolution.
Yeah.
It's the guillotine.
We will go back and check that, but the, we had in our records that your second term as planning commissioner expired on the 31st of August.
Okay. Well, I took over someone's term who moved into the city and I was in the county. And then I've been elected twice since.
And then you were reappointed in 2005.
Oh, okay. So that takes the two terms.
According to our, I think we were supposed, I think we were supposed to inform you of that, or it was done through the clerk's office. But that's what our records show. So you might be excused from duty after this meeting. But as you are the chairperson and this could be your final meeting, we just wanted to bring note to that. And we appreciate all the work you've done at chairing these meetings and coming in and signing plats on short notice. And that's one of the duties of the chairman is when you get a plat and it gets to its final permanent form, then the chairman of the planning commission has to sign that on behalf of the rest of you. And we've had different occasions to call Margaret in and come into the office to do that, to not wait till the next meeting. So we appreciate all you've done to be helpful that way.
You're welcome. I've enjoyed my tenure. I've enjoyed it a lot. It's been very interesting.
Well, maybe there'll be no expression of interest forms. You'll be with us again before.
I just sit out for a while, don't I?
You do have to sit out before you can be, have your reinterest. But I, the challenge is that the way this board is set up is that there are seven members from inside the city and there's supposed to be two representatives that live outside but within three miles of the city. And you are one and Mr. Miccel, or you are grandfathered since you've been annexed, but then Mr. Miccel was the other. And so.
Oh, okay. So with my exodus, then you will.
Then we have to find somebody else that lives outside the city limits but within three miles. So you have a special position. My other item is that the, this week and starting tomorrow, the Gould Evans Consultants will be back out. And there's a luncheon meeting for the Advisory Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan, and that is tomorrow at noon at Martinelli's. And then if you are a participant in a focus group, the focus groups involving economic development, connectivity, downtown, and growth and development are meeting down here Thursday morning at 7:30 with Gould Evans. And then the groups, if you are Neighborhood Housing, Parks and Recreation, Community and People, or Youth, then we are meeting down here Wednesday evening at 7:00, which is tomorrow night.
Down here?
Down here.
This room?
Yes. So the Advisory Committee meeting, that's a noon meeting at Martinelli's tomorrow noon. And then the focus groups, Group Two, Neighborhood Housing, Parks and Rec, and Community, People, and Youth will meet tomorrow evening here at 7:00. And then early Thursday morning, 7:30, the Economic Development, Connectivity, Downtown, Growth and Development groups will meet. And Gould Evans will be here in town to update you on where they're at. So I think that's all the information we have.
Is that here in this room?
Yes. The Advisory Committee meeting is a lunch meeting, but the focus groups will meet in this room. More likely, we think, probably in the room next door here, which is a little more comfortable. This is a little formal for those type of groups, so we think we'll probably meet over here next door. I think that's the information that we have. And as I said, we'll have, I think, three or four different development-related applications at your next September meeting.
There being no further business, I adjourn the meeting.
I feel sort of like a lame duck.
Like I was a lame duck today.